A little.
If Hank wasn't so fast on his feet, I would have beat him up here. My question is tonight involved at the last zoning meeting in different times when we've had public talking to people that are at the podium. Last council meeting was about the rezoning proposal. In the past, we've always had a microphone in the center of the circle of the council here. So that if a question from the public came up, it could be answered from the person at the podium giving the presentation and like that. Otherwise, it's kind of an awkward situation where the public may not agree with the person at the podium. And then we're asking them to come up and go on TV and talk in public and also face the person they don't agree with at the same time. That's kind of restrictive of getting transparent government and getting your best information from the public. So I don't know what happened to the, if we still have it or if it broke or what happened to it. But could that be put back in place? Second part is when we do, when we signed on to do Dry Run Project, we actually signed on to have the contractor closing streets that have not been officially closed. It's still listed in the Waverly Code ordinances, Seventh Avenue Southwest, Second Avenue and Fourth Avenue, I believe, are going to be closed. And they're still listed in the code ordinances as through streets. At some time, we'll have to close those streets. It'd been more appropriate to close them before we started the project. It's kind of backdoor way of closing a street out. There, I'm bringing it up because there was resistance a year, couple, three years ago about closing Seventh Avenue Southwest. People use that rather than using the Burger King corner. So those two things.
Thank you. Let's do the latter. Any comments, city engineer?
Nope.
Okay. And, and the first issue on the microphone.
The one that's in the middle is over there now, right? I mean, so I don't know if there's an opportunity, if there's another one we can hook up. I think that's a good idea, having, having maybe two there. Especially a lot of times, that one's set up in a way that people have to pick it up to talk on it or, but you know, I don't know if there's more wiring that something might need to be wired.
If Hank wasn't so fast on his feet, I would have beat him up here. My question is tonight involved at the last zoning meeting in different times when we've had public talking to people that are at the podium. Last council meeting was about the rezoning proposal. In the past, we've always had a microphone in the center of the circle of the council here, so that if a question from the public came up, it could be answered from the person at the podium giving the presentation and like that. Otherwise, it's kind of an awkward situation where the public may not agree with the person at the podium, and then we're asking them to come up and go on TV and talk in public and also face the person they don't agree with at the same time. It's kind of restrictive of getting transparent government and getting your best information from the public. So I don't know what happened to the, if we still have it, or if it broke, or what happened to it, but could that be put back in place? Second part is, when we do, when we signed on to do Dry Run Project, we actually signed on to have the contractor closing streets that have not been officially closed. It's still listed in the Waverly Code ordinances, Seventh Avenue Southwest, Second Avenue and Fourth Avenue, I believe, are going to be closed, and they're still listed in the code ordinances as through streets. At some time, we'll have to close those streets. It'd been more appropriate to close them before we started the project. It's kind of a backdoor way of closing a street out. There, I'm bringing it up because there was resistance a year, couple, three years ago about closing Seventh Avenue Southwest. People use that rather than using the Burger King corner. So those two things.
Thank you. Let's do the latter. Any comments, city engineer?
Nope.
And the first issue on the microphone?
The one that's in the middle, it's over there now, right? I mean, so I don't know if there's an opportunity, if there's another one we can hook up. I think that's a good idea, having maybe two there, especially a lot of times, that one's set up in a way that people have to pick it up to talk on it, or, but, you know, I don't know if there's more wiring that, something might need to be wired, or I spent a few bucks on that or something, but, you know, I thought it was good having that there. But like I said, when we kind of rearranged a little bit, and, you know, it's good having one over there, so it's micro whoever isn't always going back up in four, too, so it's my opinion if there's a, we can look into that, maybe.
Yeah, let's just keep talking on it and see.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the age of the equipment that we use. We've got the item about working with Warburg for the broadcasts here anyways, but I know one of the things I would be interested in looking at would be microphones that were a little more sensitive in terms of picking us up, since that's one of the issues we do have with visibility and audibility at home, people being able to know what we're talking about if we're not directly into the mic and...
You know, I think part of that, it's, I think they're, I like the way they are because I think it's more on us, because if you've got, you know, some lower end mics or, then they're picking up you into mine, and they're picking up more scuffling.
It is, but it's with all...
You're talking about for those, maybe for those over there?
Yeah, with everything and probably even looking at cameras and equipment in general, you know, the whole package of what might be needed to do, do the presentation and do, do the recordings and have it so that the public is able to understand and record and see what we're doing and hear what we're doing better.
Right, and just know the next generation of these things, what they can do and what they can't do.
Yeah, I was just saying, maybe it'd be good to hear more of the conversation instead of being so one directional, maybe. I mean, I, my voice doesn't carry anyway, but you only hear the person that's physically talking into the mic, and maybe if there's more of a conversation, you might pick that up, or maybe wanting to kind of avoid that, or...
Yeah, I'm saying, I like, I like the ones that you have to get close to it. I like those because then you're not picking up, you know, someone's scuffling papers nearby, so I think so for up here, it's more on us to be more cognizant of this, whereas, I, yeah, I don't know.
When, when you're making fun of me, I want people to hear that, though.
I try, I try to, I mean.
Okay.
I'm just...
There are six items on tonight's consent agenda calendar. They are a pay request from Denver Underground and Grading for their second street northwest work, Peters Construction has a bill for public services, McClure Engineering has a runway bill for the airport, we have a liquor license to approve for the OP, we have a Class C liquor license for East Bremer Diner, and we have the August cash disbursements to pay. Is there a motion?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
I wonder, can I just ask a question of one without taking it out to vote separately? I just had, I just had a question.
Yeah, we've done that in the past.
Is that possible?
So says Chris.
Yeah, we've done that without taking one out, yeah.
Or maybe we have to take it out, I don't know.
I mean, you, how I've, I've always taken that, you ask, you ask a question if you don't like, if you don't, still don't agree with whatever, then you can ask to pull it out, but if it's, we've always done it that way, yeah.
Sorry, I'm sorry to, but the change of ownership, liquor license?
Well, I mean, that's what we've done.
Is that, we've had those before, is that a, it's, it's minor, but I'm just curious why we have a change of ownership. It seems like it's common now that a lot of liquor licenses or the ownership doesn't match the business and so forth?
Oh, it's, it's very average to do this every time, like, we had a change of ownership on this business, there's a new owner.
Oh, okay.
So it has to, it's required.
Okay, so.
Second.
Yep, no, and I should have said more fully, that, no, to answer a little more. So, good question. Has been motioned, did it get a second?
Yep.
And all in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no, consent calendar is approved. Regular business item number one involves the city and Warburg College working together on local cable and live meeting coverage. Let's go directly to a motion.
I move Resolution 15-121 approving the memorandum of agreement between Warburg College and the City of Waverly and the operation of the local cable television governmental access channel and the production of live governmental meetings.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion second, council discussion.
This is, you know, I was going to kind of mention, one of the things I wanted to look at and find some discussion on was the possible upgrading of equipment and particularly for uploading to, you know, we've had some issues with that, it seems like we're getting there, but we've also had issues with sound not coming through and others as well, and just, I don't know the age of this equipment and having worked with some down in Cedar Falls with, with my program that I do down there, and what they have set up in terms of, I know, the HD cameras that they use and just kind of looking long range at some of that renewal. I know we've also talked about televising more of, maybe the strategic planning discussions or some of the other discussions that we've held elsewhere, maybe having a little bit of an ability to go mobile, if that's the case, where we could still have a wide shot even of just some of the discussion for that, and not necessarily be bound to the council chambers, but be able to have some of those meetings in other locations, but still have the ability to record them.
That's something that I think would be good for the council to look at a budget, because those are significant capital investments that would be all on the city. Warburg, I'm sure, would still be willing to discuss doing the production, especially if you're remote shots, but that's, I think, another reason why we're talking about a one-year agreement rather than three years because of technology. Really, the notion that it may be that in the future, we can have a fiber link to the college and they can do all the pre-imposed production there. So, all of the things that you talk about, all great ideas, but should probably be part of the capital budgets, because I think that...
Just kind of throwing it out there for...
Yeah, right.
Thoughts along those lines.
I don't recall, Carla, do you recall when these microphones came in and some of the upgrades here?
It seems like that was around '09 or '10. They're really not that old.
I thought these were here before I got here.
The orig, the same look was, but we did just upgrade the audio/video.
And I know the Tricaster software is new last year, I think, and so that's what we're looking at. Part of the issues that we've come across is for other live streams like night vision, you have the company's hardware and the company's software. So we're using Tricaster, which is another company, trying to make it work with YouTube, which is kind of the problem last week that we ran into for the live stream, and so I think we're, we're trying to find the best fit for the free first, but I think moving forward, depending on what quality you want and what type of infrastructure we have, is definitely worth taking a look at.
And we're definitely bottlenecked right now by the internet upload speed here, so even if we had high-definition cameras, it would probably not function very well, so...
It's all stuff to consider.
You know, another thing, too, to think about maybe for the next council is, you know, in the past, well, right now, we have a cable commission, and, you know, that might be something to look at. Changing that cable commission into more of maybe a cable slash technology commit, you know, something where you have some, maybe some folks in the area that are technology savvy, and you can maybe run some things by for recommendations or get input on stuff, because, you know, the cable, I mean, I know in the past, cable commission is meant to look at this contract and stuff, but I don't think the cable commission has met in over a year, if even more than that. I mean, it's, it's, quite frankly, it's not, not a very useful commission, I don't think. So I think that could be looked at to, you know, maybe some ideas to upgrade that commission or if something like that makes sense, I don't know, but...
And I think, Phil, can you, you can correct me, but I think that was because of the whole telecommunications board that was brought up at Waverly Utilities now?
Well, part of it is that that committee was formed when we had our franchise with MediaCom to work on franchise negotiations, and I want to say it was October of 2013, MediaCom filed in 26 different cities to be put under the statewide franchise because they had competition from another provider that had said they were going to come in. That provider never materialized, but we're still working with them as to when, if we even have a standing franchise with MediaCom or if we're under the statewide. So now is a really good time to look at that, the technology committee.
And, yeah, and I mean, the, the one time that committee really, or that commission really got together was when we came up with the option for churches to be able to put their, their programming on. So I think with, with probably Waverly Utilities, there might be more, more opportunities to broadcast some things, maybe some school things, maybe some, you know, more church things, or people want to do their own little show or something, some of that stuff. So it might, might be, you know, a good commission for that to help along with some of that, I don't know, but...
There's a line in here, as it's talking about what it's actually recording, "The city budget planning sessions and other appropriate public interest events as staff are available." Is there, I wonder if there's a way, you know, because there's been, there's been some topics that we've asked, is it going to be televised, just, you know, just so people, so it's more widely available? Is there a better way that maybe we can make that available? I mean, even, you know, not even if, you know, if, if they don't have staff available that night, if it's not a normal meeting, if it's a budget planning session or, or strategic planning session or one of those types of things? Is there any way that we could almost have a minimum staff or just have the cameras turned on or something available somehow included in this contract?
Yeah, I think the idea of the contract is whenever you want something televised that's not normally televised, and it works for Warburg staff and students to be there, you can mutually agree to that, and then they just, I believe they would bill us at the same rate as they would do during a break time, which I think is 22 and 10. I'll have to find it out.
That's correct.
Yeah, 20, 20 and 10.
Okay.
Or 22, anyway, that's something that I think the council can decide on what they want televised and when, and then ask for that to be done.
To be available, yeah. Because I like, I think to answer, you know, the question, there's really no reason we couldn't have, if we're limited to this room for, for strategic planning meetings or budget meetings, I'd be okay with that if we could plan ahead and have them recorded. I think, I mean, I'm okay with that, and the people are sitting at home, so it's, it would work, but if we could actually get it accomplished, that would be...
And budget meetings are recorded.
Sure.
Just those strategic...
We did one that we were kind of sitting around a table, though, or whatever.
She means the big, the big Saturday ones that we do.
Oh, yeah.
Tried different ways or whatever, but, yeah, if we could, yeah, if, if that's in here someplace that we can plan ahead and make them available or...
And I, I think part of that discussion would be, what do you want televised and what do you want to be open meetings but not televised? Because there are probably things that, that work better in a smaller setting or might change the dynamic of the group. I know I've said that in the past, too. If the cameras are on and the mics are rolling, the brainstorming is different than it is when a public meeting, but in a, around the kitchen table setting, so something to consider.
You know, you know my opinion. If it's, if we're here, I'd rather have the people being able to join in that.
Absolutely, but it does change dynamics.
Other discussion? Public input before we vote.
Like, this is just a, yeah, this is just a one-year, yeah, one-year extension on this one, yeah.
Roll call, vote, please.
Resnick.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Nyandorff.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Resolution 15-121 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number two is the final reading to rezone the former Harris lawn at 314 First Avenue Southeast to R4. Let's go directly to a formal motion.
I move the third and final reading of ordinance 1001, amending the zoning ordinance of Waverly, Iowa, providing for rezoning from commercial District C3 to multiple-family residential, transitional district R4 for 314 First Avenue Southeast.
Is there a second? Public input before we vote. Roll call, vote.
Lampy.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Nyandorff.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Resnick.
Yes.
Ordinance 1001 unanimously approved. Regular business item number three is to approve an increase in final adjustment payment to Denver Underground and Grading for the Second Street Northwest street work. City administrator, are you satisfied?
Yes.
Then a formal motion.
I move approval of change order number one for the Second Street Northwest Area Storm Sewer and Street Improvements Project for the final adjustment of contract quantities in the amount of $6,967.80 increase.
Second, please.
Second.
The motion is second, council discussion.
Any, I guess, just a summary of the increase?
Mike, do you have that? Final adjustment? Yeah, final adjustment quantities, just adjusts all the adds and decreases, so if you go through the pay application spreadsheet, you can see under the change order section in the middle of the spreadsheet, the various adds and deductions throughout the entire project. The auditors like us to do this because then the amount paid to Denver Underground is the adjusted contract amount.
I think just to, to note, it was $850,000 and the change was six, so, yep.
Any other discussion?
Well, I would like to point out, this is a very challenging type of project. This is like remodeling your house, going in, dealing with a lot of the underground utilities and, and trying to manage the traffic and maintain accessibility as much as possible to the adjoining businesses. We did, the, the project did take longer than we, we had expected due to the need necessary to relocate a gas main, and I think the utility company was somewhat overwhelmed this year in particular, and unfortunately, we're not able to, to complete it before school. We, we went about a week into the school year, and we were hoping to, to finish it sooner. So we are also making a slight adjustment on the allowable contract period for completing the work due to the delays that were caused by the need to relocate a gas main.
Sure. Any other thoughts? Public input. All in favor signify with yes.
Yes.
Opposed with no, unanimously approved. Regular business item number four is a motion that we'll need to make. Someone like to so move?
Move Resolution 15-122, accepting the Second Street Northwest Area Storm Sewer and Street Improvement Project as complete and approving final pay estimate of $44,052.87 to Denver Underground and Grading of Denver, Iowa.
Second.
Second.
Motion second, council discussion. Public input.
How did the two big trees that we went between fare after all this? Are they, or we won't know until next spring, or what? Because I know Tab said he really didn't want to lose that hackberry, but it would be nice if we didn't lose either one of them.
Right, sometimes it even takes two years to know for sure.
I can inform you that the area's been so dug up, we did not tear into any major root systems because the ground has previously been disturbed so many times. So there, there wasn't anything in the way of a significant root system in the area that we were digging.
Well, that's, that's good. Thank you, yeah. Roll call, vote, please.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Resnick.
Yes.
Nyandorff.
Yes.
Waldstein.
Yes.
Lampy.
Yes.
Resolution 15-122 is unanimously approved. Regular business item number five is to replace the mechanics room insulation at the airport. City administrator, comments, please.
This is a project to redo, a project that was poorly done by another contractor and rejected by the city. So this comes in, we've talked about the mechanics room in the past, and this comes in to restore that to its original design.
Formal motion.
I'll move Resolution 15-123, approving quote for the Waverly Airport Mechanics Room Insulation Replacement Project in the amount of $10,068 to Kinsler Construction of Ames, Iowa.
Second.
Second.
Council discussion.
Just the same, same room that was done before?
That, that's correct, and, and it was very poorly done, the work was rejected. Since that time, the, the contractor, I believe, has gone out of business.
Can you review for us orally what the financial impact is of that?
They were not paid because we had not accepted the work. so in that respect, you know, you could say that their, their bid was, was too low and not, not reflective of what was needed to do a quality job. You will see in this bid that there is a couple thousand dollars that is to remove the insulation that was installed by the previous contractor. So, this, this can happen. It's very rare that it's ever happened. And this is the first time in my eighteen years with the city.
And, and can you tell us a little bit too about, you know, I know these things happen and sometimes mistakes are made, but if this is a contractor that went out of business, what, what kinds of things were we looking at when we chose this contractor to begin with?
The, the original contractor?
Mm-hmm.
They indicated that they had the, the background to do it. They did not going forward. We have references from this contractor and, and in addition to that, they, you've seen the photographs in here of the completed work they've done. McClure Engineering has also followed through with their references and gotten favorable responses back from the other agencies that this contractor's performed work with. The contract dollar amount is, is so small, you know, we were less than five thousand dollars. And because of that small contract amount, we, we don't do the performance and maintenance bonds. It's just not reflective of, in proportion to the dollar amount of the work being done. When we get into much larger projects, yes, we certainly require performance and maintenance bonds.
Thanks.
Thank you. Public input.
Is it, is it the, the material is defective? Because you said that the, like the powder coating is coming off of the...
That was from...
Was it because it was installed improperly?
That was the nineteen ninety-six work that was done. And, and in the environment out there, it's, it's, the facing on the insulation is, is disintegrating. So, this project is to basically correct that situation by providing, installing a new layer of insulation. So, it will, it will encapsulate that, that membrane that's deteriorating and provide additional insulation.
So, this is not just for the mechanics room? This is for the entire?
No, this is just for the mechanics room. We still have the issue out in the, in the main hangar facility.
But the mechanics room is where they're doing engine rebuilds and everything where you said it was a problem?
That's the most critical area, yes.
But that's already been covered up with this insulation that was approved a year ago.
This insulation is the faulty insulation that needs to be removed, the mechanics room. So, we're...
Faultily installed.
Correct.
But the insulation that's in the rest of the building is what is flaking off. So, it's not falling on the parts that are being, when they're working on motors and everything.
So, we have not replaced, all of the insulation was flaking off in the mechanics room and the main bulk hangar.
We have not, we have not removed any of it. This is to encapsulate it with a new layer of insulation.
But what did Prairie Construction do then?
Excuse me?
What did Prairie Construction do?
The mechanics room.
They installed insulation over top of what was flaking off?
That's correct, and that work is rejected.
Okay, but that's not a problem when it comes to rebuilding engines because the powder coat has been covered up by the insulation that, insulation that is, that was installed properly.
But because it was done improperly, it all needs to come out and be redone.
But it's not falling on the engines right now. It was just kind of, the way I understood it, maybe just to kind of clarify, the way I understand that the insulation was old and flaking, so they're going to replace the insulation. And the replacement job is the one that wasn't done correctly. Is that...
Correct.
So, this kind of makes it sound like it's still flaking, but it was flaking and then they, then last year we were, we were going to do the insulation job to fix it, but that's, that wasn't done correctly. So, it's not a flaking problem now. It's just a bad insulation job now.
Terrible job.
Yeah. I guess I would, I mean, if you look at the pictures, I was out there and, I mean, if you're wondering, how can this happen? We just stood there, we shook our heads and in awe. I mean, it's a bad job and it wasn't acceptable.
Right.
Where I don't know if it was even insulated. But I thought the, the flaking was just before the job was to fix it. Maybe, does that answer your question? It was. I guess it was kind of confusing that when I read through the report on it was that it was flaking off. Well, well, it's already, the mechanics room was, was replaced a year ago. But it's not replaced well.
The, the summary and the background information is related to the original need for the project, which is, is the deterioration in the insulation membrane. And the work that was done by our contractor a year ago was of such poor quality that we rejected it and directed them to, to correct it and replace it. And since then, they've gone out of business. So, this new contract is to remove what was installed a year ago and replace it and with a much better workmanship.
I guess I was reading the, the agenda memo that was on the supporting documentation is dated September twenty-first. It was dated today. I guess that's where I was confused.
I think if we're satisfied with that, we can move on. Public input.
I too have looked at that job we had done a year ago. And mainly, the biggest problem was that the contractor never took light boxes down and stuff to put the insulation back of it. He got slots where the conduit went through the insulation. So, then you have cracks that tape is peeling off and like that. So, then you have the chance of the stuff, the original stuff flaking through those cracks and then doing what we didn't want it to do. But why are we spending twenty-two hundred dollars? Why don't we just encapsulate the, the poor workmanship with proper workmanship and reinforce the insulation in that part of the building? Because we're, we're really just covering up the places where they cut through the, the membrane.
City engineer, would you like to answer why we couldn't just perfect the old? Or it's just impossible, correct?
These buildings were constructed where the insulation is originally installed before the sheet metal roof is, is put in place. So, when they go to redo these, the insulation's left in place and you add a new layer from the bottom. And you have to then strap that into place. And the photographs you see show that strapping support system. So, it ends up looking a little bit like the ceiling in here. Take a roof like this, a ceiling like this, and now try to figure out how to add another layer of material to it. Okay? The steel membrane or the steel support system of the roof system is set up, so that allows you the ability to add that insulation and have the strapping span from steel beam to steel beam. But to try to put six inches of insulation on the ceiling and then strap it in place isn't practical. So, what you do is you remove that second layer that's been installed and replace it. Not simply try to add a third, like a third layer of shingles.
Got the picture. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Lampy.
No.
Nyandorff.
Yes.
Resnick.
Yes.
Kengas.
Yes.
McKenzie.
Yes.
Resolution fifteen dash one-two-three is approved, five to one. Regular business item number six is to buy a new utility tractor. City Administrator for the public, what are we buying?
Mr. Mayor, this is a budgeted replacement of a New Holland tractor from two thousand and four that is used by the parks area in the summertime and out at the airport in the wintertime. We went out to bid for a replacement midsize utility tractor and received four bids. One from Daikey Implement for a Kubota, one from B and K Midwest for a John Deere, and two from Titan Machinery for Case Products. And factoring in the bid price, which included trade-in values and list price, we are recommending the Kubota from Daikey Implement for the bid price of thirty thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars inclusive of a fifteen thousand dollar trade-in.
Thank you. Motion, please.
Move approval of the low bid of thirty thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars from Daikey Implement of Waverly, Iowa for a replacement utility tractor for the parks and airports divisions, airport divisions.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion is second. Council discussion. Public input. All in favor signify with yes.
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 Opposed with no, approved. Regular business item number seven is a discussion for the replacement of our city administrator. Tonight, we begin discussion number one, but I think we need to thank Phil for giving Waverly a high profile and a statewide reputation, which gives us a decent opportunity to attract a strong candidate. The goal seems to me is to expedite the process in hopes of minimalizing the gap between time that Phil leaves and time the next person comes in. Phil, you were going to talk to Bryn Mawr Fursman. Did, can you give us a briefing on that?
Sure. I had an opportunity this morning to speak with Richard Fursman who did the search with Bryn Mawr Fursman when I was called in two thousand and twelve, just to talk a little bit about timelines and processes and, and working with council. And when we visited this morning, his, he would be interested in, in talking to the mayor and the city council, talking about doing a search firm again. He has several underway right now, but would be happy to submit a proposal. And again, there, there are a couple of tracks here. One is to do RFPs for search firms, and I listed about six firms that, that are in the area doing that. The other would be entering an agreement again with Bryn Mawr Fursman because they already have a position profile. They know a lot about the community. They know a lot of the people who participated last time. Generally, a timeline would be such that a proposal would be given and could be reviewed and accepted by council, probably in October. But before a contract would be entered into, Richard would want to come and meet with the mayor and council and discuss kind of how things are going, the direction, how the group works together, what the goals are for calling a new candidate, not calling, but recruiting and then hiring a new candidate, so that he could better understand kind of the current situation and what, what the council is looking for. And then he could go back and start putting together a recruitment program and, and advertising. Generally, I put on our documents from two thousand and twelve, if you start in October, that means you'll probably be looking to have somebody in place late December, early January. It's kind of a similar timeframe as we had last time, just move back a couple of months. So, he's more than happy to submit a proposal and work with the council, but he wants to have that opportunity before a contract's signed to really sit down and kind of go through the current state of things. Otherwise, there's a, there's a RFP there we can put out and ask for proposals from the other firms, which a lot of cities do. The one that we have, I borrowed extensively from Knoxville who just went through this. And so they went out for RFPs for their city administrator recruitment firm. So, that's an option too.
How, how popular is this firm?
Right now in Iowa, they're doing searches for Mount Vernon, Iowa and Atumwa, Iowa.
I wasn't on council when you were hired, Phil, but I know I've talked to several city council members who were part of that, either current or former city council members who were part of that process. And, I mean, in, in general, I've heard very positive things about that process and a lot of credit given to the search firm for the, for the way in which they conducted or helped guide us through, through, through the search at that time. It would seem to me that because there hasn't been much time in between that, you know, I don't know, I guess, unless there were really compelling argument why we would want to do an RFP to a number of other search firms.
In two thousand and twelve, how did we arrive at Bryn Mawr Fursman? I guess, you know, did we go through a selection?
There was an RFP, but you know, we had, you know, Dick Crane said he was retiring and, you know, at the end of the year. He, you know, it was, we had more time.
I mean, is it, is it beneficial to go through that process again or is it, you know?
These guys were really, I mean, I was really impressed with them. They were very professional. I mean, they did a great job.
A lot of communication.
It just depends on, on time, I guess.
Yeah. It's a matter, matter of if you look on kind of the timeline from two thousand and twelve, it was about a month for doing the RFP process, selecting a, a firm to, to assist us. So, that, you know, by going with, with firm and Bryn Mawr Fursman, again, we would, you know, that would be a chunk off of that to do that. It's, my, my concern as far as we're okay in terms of process for advertising and doing that, that we wouldn't have to go out for an RFP?
I'll, I'll have to look and I'll, we'll confirm that tomorrow, but I, I don't believe that the, the state code speaks to that at all as far as procedures for this. And the pricing, he said, would be very consistent with what it was in two thousand and twelve, very similar to that of, around that fifteen thousand dollar mark, give or take a few thousand plus expenses.
You know, it should almost go a little faster because, you know, we built, we had a few council members kind of built a...
The profile.
The profile, which we would still have, and you know, a few of you guys or girls can tweak that a little bit or, you know, so that should, that process should be quicker.
The foundation is all there. They're familiar with the community and the key players.
And kind of what they did, for those who don't, don't know, and this would be any, anyone we pick, but you know, they, I don't know how many, they had twenty or thirty applicants and they kind of weeded it down to sixteen? It was more than that, okay. And they weeded it down to about fifteen or twelve or fifteen and they, and they gave us this big booklet with information on everyone. And then that's when we took those, those twelve and we narrowed it down to, you know, five to, to bring in. It, it worked well. I mean, it, it was, it worked really well.
Are they, are they paid, are they paid after a candidate is successfully hired or are they just providing a service?
I think it was a third, 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 wasn't it?
Yeah, it's, yeah. It's essentially, yeah, it's in three phases. Well, it's four phases, including the after hire phase, which is the onboarding and a six-month check-in.
Do they do six month and one year?
They do six month and twelve month, but I think we just did a six month. Yeah. And so, the, one-third fee due upon council approval of their profile, recruitment profile, that's after, that's developed. One-third after the presentation of the progress report and the balance is due ten days after the search has been successfully completed.
So, they, they do not get paid if there's an unsuccessful search, let's say, which we hope won't happen, but that could also happen. So, then there's no payment for that final part?
For the, yeah. So, essentially then it would be paid, paid to that point.
I'm just curious how that works if they're also recruiting for other communities in Iowa and we're automatically in competition.
Well, that's, that's why it's a little different than other recruiters where you get paid a percent of the salary of the executive. And so, that way it's a little more equitable. Because I, I know when I was doing this process, they had just wrapped up Indianola and before Indianola, they had done O-line. So, they were kind of all three in a row.
Sure.
Yeah, and it actually, they, they have a pool then of candidates that they've already kind of looked at that might be similar to us and could still be interested in, in us. So, it isn't, is it competition? Yes. It's also, you know, each community is a little bit different, but they at least have candidates that they vetted and can...
Does anybody else want? That nobody else wanted?
Well, no, I would say.
Not necessarily that anybody else.
I guess we're competing for the candidates too.
Absolutely. That's really what it comes down to is the candidates, the first thing that happens when a position profile goes out is you call the recruiter and say, okay, tell me about this one, why, what's going on, where's the community, why did the last person leave, all those questions that a prospect would ask.
And I would think it would be our responsibility to kind of hold their feet to the fire for fit or whatever it is we're looking for that might be different from the next small town in addition to making sure that we're not getting someone that everybody else didn't want.
Yeah, well, that's for sure. Councilman McKenzie, you went through, through this. Do you have any reflections?
I would, I would say of the, the twelve candidates that they presented to us to kind of as a council look through and weed down to, we had twelve and then weeded down to five to bring in for interviews, and of the twelve, I think they were all high-quality candidates that would have been good fits. And if I remember the voting right, voting correctly, they were all pretty darn close in terms of our top five, in terms of numbers, in, in terms of how we brought them in as far as, because each council member kind of voted for who they were interested in of, of those twelve, and then tabulated it up. And there was a lot of, you know, there was a broad swath still that we were interested in talking to and.
It was tough. I mean, it was, yeah, there was a lot.
Other very good options.
Exactly. It was a great process. I mean, it was, that firm did a fantastic job, I thought.
Councilman McKenzie, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, I would agree. I would be comfortable moving kind of fast track and not going through the RFP. As everybody indicated, I think there's plenty of opportunity for us as a council as well as the community. I think that's what impressed me was some of the open houses meet the top-five candidates, had business and community involved in that. I know we were up at the library for one, up at the hospital for another, so they at least have a process in place that can accommodate all of those inputs. And yeah, out of the top five, I don't know that we could have gone wrong hiring any of them. I think we got the best of the five, but as far as having somebody's leftovers, I think that's a poor characterization of it, that the process allows those naturally to come to the top for what a community's looking for, and any of the top five would have been good candidates in my book.
I can add too, from this side of the table, that they're, they have a long history and are well-known, especially in this region, as one of the top firms. So they're, they're selective at times about who they take on as a candidate or a client, excuse me. And so I think that, you know, if it all works out, it'll be a good thing.
Were they competitive in price with the last RFP round?
I think they were low. I mean, they're probably, were they, they would have had to have been, or I don't know.
I think there were two responses last time, Bryn Mawr Fersman and Voorhees.
Yeah. I'd have to go back and look and see exactly.
I don't recall the cost.
I grabbed my stuff from last time, it was the Bryn Mawr Fersman stuff, I had to go back and look at the.
And just from what I can remember, the cost wasn't that different, but this firm's approach to it seemed to be more in line with what we were looking for and more holistic, I guess, in how they approached it.
Like you said, you know, they want to come and talk to us too, you know, they're, they kind of want to interview us, so they're picky about, which I think is a good thing. They're not, they're not, they're not just looking for a paycheck either, you know, so, you know, I, I said, I was, I'll say it again, I was impressed with them. I mean, I'm not easily impressed with things.
Yeah, I think I spent forty-five minutes with them the first meeting here just to understand what I wanted in a city administrator, or what I saw the community in a whole and that type of thing, so I would assume we're all going to get that same opportunity this time around if we go this direction.
I think that's probably the next, the next round of, I mean, first, first we, we might select a firm, but then we'd probably have to decide as a group where a goal is, right?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the profile, I mean, the profile.
That'll be part of the process with them though. They're going to want to know, you know. Are we on the same page, you know, or moving ahead as a town? Is this where we want to?
To build, to partially, what they did to build the profile is they actually interviewed council members and staff to find out exactly what a good fit would be, not to mention the homework of the whole community, so.
And I do know that just given the timeline here, I think it will be such that if everything works out, move ahead. By the time interviews are scheduled, the results of the election should be in, so those people, even though they may not be able to vote, if council selects someone before January first, their voice will be heard and they'll be able to interface and meet and give some input that way, which I think would be good. You always, as a candidate, you want to make sure the people that hire you stick around as long as possible because they never like you more than that day. So that's, that's what you want to see, is that consistency if you can.
Sure. I wonder, do we have any, any history on them, I guess, or how, I'm just, I've been trying to find some background and I haven't been able to online or whatever, and maybe that could be part of their.
If you look in that second, it's a little bit older now, but if you look in that profile submittal that they did, I believe there's several cities where they've done their, it looks like it starts on page seventeen of that second document. So there's about a hundred, at that time, a hundred and thirty-two different places that they've worked with. And, and so we'll get that updated list over the next couple of weeks. And it will likely be then, we'll place something on the October fifth, October fifth council meeting.
Councilman Lampy, any thoughts here? Consensus, will move ahead for the next regular council meeting?
I'll be in touch with Richard and we'll make sure on the RFP process that we're good to go.
Councilman Resnick, comfortable?
Yeah, yep. I guess I just, and maybe they, or whichever firm or however we work, I guess my, my interest would be in how we select or how we develop the profile and so forth, so they would drive that, that.
Absolutely. That's their, their job.
But not drive it in a sense that they're predisposed in any way, but just to get the best information from us and from staff and from the city.
They run that process. Yeah, they, they're the facilitators for that.
I mean, from the citizens.
Yeah.
And I don't think the profile was so black and white that it was a agreed-to, it was the spectrum, so it referenced or reflect the community, so I think.
Right. Well, we want everyone's perspectives heard, and it's the complement of all of our perspectives that gives us wisdom. So if this group can do it, then we're in good shape moving forward. Guest councilperson, Randy, any thoughts?
Well, I, yeah, I do remember the selection of the city administrator last time, and I thought it was a good process. There was a couple of times where the public was out there with the final members and yeah, it was, it was interesting and I thought it was excellent.
Yeah, and worked. So we got, we're one-for-one with this firm. So, yeah, thanks for your comments on that. Any other last thoughts? We'll move on. We have received boards and commissions reports, we have the airport commission minutes from July ninth. Any comments? Officially received, we have the library board of trustees minutes from August eleventh. Any comments? Officially received, the senior center group minutes from August twentieth. Comments? Officially received, monthly financials, da-da-da-dum-da-dum, from Jennifer. Any, any comments? She's here to answer anything that you might have to ask because she's totally aware of everything that's going on.
If I don't know, I'll find out.
Officially received, staff comments?
You'll see a letter from the Historic Preservation Commission on the Third Street Southeast Bridge. Today we received a proposal from Butch Kay on kind of three proposals really, one to do work for reviewing the existing condition of the bridge and examining that, second, to draw up engineered plans and documents for the repair work, and then a third to oversee the repair work, if I recall correctly. So we will bring that proposal to you on October fifth for council action and discussion. So it's in our possession and we'll have it on the agenda for that first business meeting in October.
Will, will Butch be present for that?
I will ask him to be here. I will invite him to attend.
Okay.
Which will help us answer every million questions we get during the time between sessions. Sarah?
I also have another historic preservation item. I have an invitation here that has been sent out to Southwest residents, and I think I'm just going to pass that around. Our consultant, Marla Svenson, wanted to make sure that each of the council members received an invitation to the Southwest Neighborhood Meeting, which is going to be this Thursday, September twenty-fourth at seven o'clock at the library, and it will be for Southwest residents to gather information about the historic district that will be coming in that area. They can get information on their particular property that night if they want to, but just find out what the whole National Register process is like and what it means for them. So you are all invited as well.
This is good work, important work. That's the end of the.
Just as a preview for next week, we're going to be discussing herb side recycling and get an update on our recycling efforts in the community, and also social media and city's policy and other approaches to social media, so should be interesting. Tune in, seven o'clock.
Hey, tune, yes.
That means you have to blow it up on Facebook, Dave.
There you go.
I know now.
City council comments, we'll start with David.
I'm good, thanks.
Mr. Dan Lampy.
I'm good.
Wow.
A few months back, we had an individual bring a issue with the downtown pedestrian crossings, those type of things, and I think we had a good discussion on, do we put in no right turns, those type of things, but I wondered if we need to circle back through that because I think we'd left it that we were going to, see if there's some other things we can do as far as crosswalk paintings, those type of things. And my understanding is they have been painted, but I don't know that, how they were painted necessarily increased their visibility, that type of thing, so. Recent or upcoming study session that might be helpful maybe to.
Keeping that alive.
I think we kind of left the impression that we were going to do something with it with the person that brought it forward, so.
Very good. Mr. Cagnas.
Just kind of an update if we could on progress on Fourth Street in particular, but other construction in town. Are we looking on schedule to get that back opened up, or what's, what are we sitting on then?
Good question.
Fourth Street, they're working as fast as they can work, so we've got good weather ahead of us, so they should make pretty good progress here.
Any ETA on that, or are we still?
Every time I do that, I tend to make things worse.
Before the end of the year?
Definitely.
Well, can't even say that, it's Iowa, who knows when the snow will flood.
I, you know, at this point, I'm, best guess is two weeks from Friday.
Hmm, very good.
I think the updates are helpful. I mean, I think we just, you know, have to understand that that's, that's your best estimate at this point in time with the information you have, and we might ask you next week and it's a different answer. I mean, it doesn't mean that this wasn't the right answer. For the most.
With that opening, we are now going to get a visual.
Visual aids, good job.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to give you a visual aid that I think really.
Visual aids.
Second Street did.
I like pictures.
This is a, a national issue, a state issue, and a local issue, and this was in the Des Moines Register Friday, September eleventh. This is very much impacting the construction industry, and it says here that some ninety-two percent of Iowa firm surveys said they were having trouble finding workers. Eighty-eight percent, they expect it will remain difficult or become even more difficult to fill jobs. We're, we're seeing that here locally. Our prime contractor on the job has equipment sitting because they don't have people to put in the, in the machines. So I've been hearing that for a while, and then this article came out about a week and a half ago.
And thank you for that. It's good to, good to have a picture of what's going on. Oh, we need more housing. No, humor. Now, let's see. Comments, Chris?
Nope.
Edith?
I don't have any either.
We're working your way, Randy. Closing comments.
Well, appreciate the opportunity to be guest. Sorry I wasn't more vocal, but I didn't think I needed to be, so I am very interested as going forward, the Green Bridge situation, since I live on that end, so I will be following that. And I am pretty amazed that since the Green Bridge is closed and all the construction, and I have to drive there, through there every day, that it's really working quite well, that I, I thought it'd be much worse than what it was, so I think we can be patient. It's, it's working out pretty well, considering.
Yes, we've moved it off the real crises to a need. Right, thank you.
I do, I did run across at work just the other day, someone that sits near me that, on his screensaver, he had, I says, is that the Waverly Green Bridge? And he had that, and he's from Reedland, and I said, what do you got that on there for? He says, because it's so cool, you know, so I do like that Green Bridge, so.
You have spoken. The message was heard.
Thank you.
It's a nice bridge. Mayor's comments, just to say that Saint Paul's Lutheran Church did their dedication yesterday in the morning and to say to the community, if you weren't able to be there, it was an A-plus presentation of progress. It was just a feel-good, it's great inside and out, but from the city's point of view, I can say I'm sure we all appreciate their riverside impact. And if you need to have a nice view of the river that you haven't really experienced before, come up to their parking lot and park facing the river. It's really phenomenal. But make sure you get a tour there. The staff would be willing to show anybody through. It's just a nice addition to Waverly. It just, again, shows our progress as a town. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Will we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.